Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of January 4th, 2023, and welcome everyone to the city council chambers. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Tonight is a hybrid meeting. Community members are welcome to join us either in person or remote via Zoom or telephone. For those who wish to participate in the future at a meeting on Zoom, you'll find the instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note that we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tuie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Vogli?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. I'd like to ask Councilmember Ryan, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Please stand ovationally. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Vogli, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shih Hoosh people and their successors, the Tillalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to postpone the minutes of December 14th again. There was a council member that had questions, and because of the holiday in our break, didn't get to ask those, so she will touch base with David Hall, and we will look for approval of the minutes of December 21st.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the December 21st minutes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Abstain.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Franklin.
Good evening.
And happy new year.
Happy new year. Happy new year to everybody. I have a few updates this evening. First, I wanted to acknowledge a request to the animal shelter. That is a consent item on tonight's agenda. Woodenville residents Richard and Jean Minch were animal lovers who, after their passing, provided generous gifts to animal organizations throughout Puget Sound. The $200,000 donation is the largest ever received by the Everett Animal Shelter, and it will go into the fund for the animals where it will be used to provide veterinary care and other services that directly support the animals, including this $200,000 donation. In 2022, the shelter received a record-breaking $632,000 in donations and grants from our community of animal lovers, and I really want to just extend my appreciation first to all those donors and organizations, but also to the shelter team that worked really hard to get those donations into the Everett Animal Shelter and are obviously working very hard to take care of the animals in our care. So, thank you to that team. Second, council members received an email from me earlier today asking for approval of an emergency resolution, also under the consent agenda, for repairs for one of our fire engines. As a reminder, engine company number five was at the scene of an injury collision on I-5 Northbound near 41st. Due to the hazards of operating and traffic, department policy requires a heavy fire apparatus to park in a blocking position to create a safe workspace for vehicles driving through so that the folks that are taking care of the accident are safe and that, obviously, those that are suffering in the accident are safe. Despite the warning lights attempted, there's a car that attempted to drive through the emergency scene. The apparatus performed its purpose and blocked that, and then therefore was struck, preventing the car from crashing into the initial crash and the first responders that were dealing with that. But the engine sustained damage and requires specialized diagnostics and repair. So, hoping that you will approve that emergency resolution to get those repairs quickly. And then lastly, I just wanted to extend my gratitude on behalf of all of our residents to our public works team who worked so hard during our snow event. I wasn't here a couple weeks ago to give you my thanks, but I have received multiple thanks from our public. Dealing with these snow events is really hard, requires 24/7 work from our public works team, and we don't always receive a lot of thanks. We get a lot of complaints of what's happening, and there was just a really nice thank you that I received from a local family. They wanted to thank us for the amazing job of clearing the roads, that they live at the end of a very private road typically that kind of gets like piles of snow and makes it really hard for them to navigate, and they shared that the team cleared the roads, and they did an amazing job, and they didn't block the roads, and that they also cleared all the small roads around them, and they just wanted to extend their thanks. And I, on behalf of all of our residents, wanted to extend my thanks to Ryan and your team for doing such great work during the snow event. And with that, I have no further comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we take up the resolution now for motion? Yes.
Yeah, it's not a consent, sorry. It's a resolution.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution declaring an emergency regarding procurement of repair of fire engine five, apparatus number J-0159?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves?
Seconded.
Any questions or comments before we call the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And let's see, Angie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Good evening, residents of Stonecifer. We have one person remote and one in chambers. So I'll start with Joe online. If you could please unmute, and you will have three minutes to speak, and if you can please state your full name and city of residence for the record, and I'm going to share a timer so that you can keep track of your time, and once you see it, you can start.
Hello, Joe Klinsler here. I live in Sketch County, but I immediately use the Everett Transit system, and I understand you're hearing about it tonight. I am concerned about the plans for Route 18 because Route 18 does not, well, only serves one direction and should serve both directions, and I don't see why that decision was made. It makes absolutely no sense to me. The routing itself of Route 18 is very, very nice. I really like that it will stop at the future of flight. If I could share my screen. Oh, that's right, edit disabled. Okay. You know, if you looked at the map for Route 18, you know, it now goes by Seaway and it goes by the future of flight, and I think that's probably the most logical connection for the route. It could also replace Route 70 if it served both ways throughout the day. So, I'm generally very supportive of this effort otherwise. It's just I prefer it to serve both directions. And as you may know, the future of flight is at the top of a very steep hill, and I have a bad back, so I haven't been able to visit this place in the that used to volunteer act for several years as a result. In fact, I would also add, while we have some extra time, that it's really important to get Everett Transit and community transit working together for growth and consolidation because we need to make sure that there's access to grants, that there's, you know, an integrated network, and that we put a stop to these kind of conversations about what, you know, who's responsible for what it painful. It's been an ongoing problem I have since 2014, so I really want to stress the importance, please, of growth and consolidation. And again, and I want the Route 18 to serve both ways, please, and we'd like to see that route eventually become hourly, if not half hourly. So, those are the extent of my comments. I'll give you back my last 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So, if Howie could please come to the podium? And if you could please just click on the button on the right on the microphone? And if you could please state your full name and city of record for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
Howard Bargreen, 2821 Rucker, Everett, Washington. I was here last month and was talking about some problems that we've had with people on the streets that are really drug-addict criminals, and they're criminals because they've done criminal action against my employees. I think maybe some of you remember we had a problem. I think it was about December 13th where one of these people came up to my barista on Hewitt and Rodway and pointed a gun at him and said they were going to rape him. This is not unusual anymore. When I was a little kid and we came downtown at 10 years old, nobody even knew where we were. I could walk home a couple miles to my house in the middle of the dark when I was 12 years old because I'd been to the movies till 10 o'clock at night, no problem. This has really changed. Everett used to be like Disneyland. Now, it's kind of hell sometimes, and it's sad. And there's things that the city can do, and you guys know much better about it than I do, but I ran into a problem. I'm working on a remodel on a building at 2110 Hewitt. Well, next to me, the building burnt down because these criminal types on the streets started a fire above the canopy in the back of the building, and their building burnt down, and it fell on my building, cost me about 50 grand, and it put everybody out of the building for six months. In the meantime, I've been working on this building, and I found out just recently that now there's new laws changed, which you guys voted on, so every building on Hewitt has to have a canopy. And the problem with the canopies is that's where these street people would like to stay at night and start their fires and burn your buildings down. We just had a fire. I'm sure Councilman Schwab knows out right across from Fred Myers on Evergreen Way, and that was underneath a canopy. Fortunately, the building was cemented, so it didn't burn down like the one next to me, the Everett Office Furniture. So, I would say that we need to change that rule so people on Hewitt don't have to put up canopies until the city of Everett can take care of this criminal street people that we have, and I'd be more than happy to be on any committee to help with that. I have my ideas. I don't want to bother you with that now. I just want to tell you that I don't plan to put that canopy up, given my chance of having my building burned down. I hope you guys will understand that because if it does go to corridor, however, through the system, it'll come to you. Happy 2023, and I really appreciate all the effort that people do, like the city council people, because I know it's thankless, and I can just say that I've tried to do the same thing for Everett for a long time.
Thank you, Howie. President Stonecifer, that concludes our public comments.
Thank you. Okay, where are we? Sorry, a little technical challenge here. We can move on to administrative update. Is there any administrative update this evening? Thank you. And Mr. Hall, do you have anything from the city attorney's office?
No report from the legal department, but we are requesting a 15-minute executive session pursuant to RCW 423110A and 1I with no council action to follow.
Thank you. We'll move to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the nine consent items?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves?
Councilmember Tuie, seconds. Any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes.
President Stonecifer, there were 13 consent items, so I just want to...
Oh. Thank you. Let the record show that there were 13 consent items, items one through 13 on the agenda. Do we need to revote on that?
Yes.
I think to be safe, you should.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the 13 consent agenda items?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves?
Councilmember Tuie, seconds. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. We'll move on to our proposed action item. There's one item on proposed action, Council Bill 2212-69. It's item 14. That's been read into the record in the past. The third and final reading will be on January 11th. Are there any questions on this item? Move to our action item. Item 15 is the nomination of council president, mayor pro tempore, and vice president for the year 2023. I will now open up nominations for the 2023 council president and mayor pro tem, and we'll accept all nominations, and then we will vote. Each council member will signify which of the nominees they would like to vote for until we get a group of four, and we'll keep voting.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Stonecifer for president.
Thank you. I'll second that. Thank you.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Ryan for president.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Thank you. We have myself. Thank you for that. Councilmember Stonecifer and Councilmember Ryan. We will call the roll, and each council member will state which of the two, or they may abstain from voting. Yes.
Can we hear from you both first?
Yes.
Please.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much for the nomination. I'm well positioned to take on a leadership role. As I've mentioned a number of times, I've worked for two King County council members in two different roles. I've worked for Homish County Councilmember, who served as chair this last year, and now in this role as a city council member. I have a lot of experience across various jurisdictional models and have a deep foundational understanding of how government can function and how it can also not function, and with all of this strong background in governance through district, and all of this with a strong background in governance through districted representation. This year, I've shown my dedication and preparedness. I'm committed to transparency, open communication, and collaboration, and I believe that a healthy model is to rotate council leadership, and all of this puts me in a well, a good position to take on this role. When voters approve districts, there's a clear message that they're ready for a new perspective and a new way of conducting business, and I think we should fulfill their intent. I'd be honored to serve in this leadership role and confident that I can and well perform the duties of this position and would be grateful for your consideration.
Thank you. And I would like to say thank you very much for this nomination. I have served on this council for 19 years. This will be my last year serving on council. Yes, I'm not running for reelection. I would like to continue the work that we've been doing. I think we've made a lot of important changes on our council procedures. We have moved forward, and we are conducting our business a lot differently. I think there's still more work to be done for that, and I think that the continuity of having leadership for two years is often very helpful because you kind of get your feet under you in the first year, and then you can move forward on a lot of the initiatives that remain pending in year two, and I would appreciate your consideration. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
For the nominators, are we allowed to speak to why?
Sure. I will allow that.
Okay. I wanted to preface with, I have appreciated President Stonecifer's leadership throughout this last year, and it's been a bit of a bumpy one in some senses, but it's helpful to see it done with such diplomacy, and I'm grateful for that. And I think, given that it may be our last opportunity to learn from you on some of these issues, I do think having new leadership while you're here would be very helpful to have you as an important reference with that regard. And I know the reason why I nominated Councilmember Ryan is because I have seen her leadership. I've seen her resume on paper. She's extremely qualified, and I know that her leadership and practice has been very effective when she has a vision and implementing that, and I think that with a new leadership on council, she will be able to bring that kind of leadership that establishes goals and accomplishes them and puts in the time commitment that is necessary for somebody in that role. And I've been very impressed with watching her work behind the scenes. She does always come very prepared, and I really, really like following her on questions because she asks half of the questions that I would have asked anyways. So, that is why I wanted to nominate Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Councilmembers Erlingo, would you like an opportunity to speak?
I will only say, oh, sorry. I'll only summarize by describing continuity and skill and my appreciation for that and the guidance that we've had in several new council members coming in all at once, I think, for the first time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we call the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes, I'll vote for Councilmember Stonecifer.
Councilmember Schwab?
Councilmember Stonecifer.
Councilmember Fosse?
Councilmember Ryan?
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Councilmember Stonecifer.
Councilmember Vogli?
Councilmember Ryan.
Councilmember Ryan?
Councilmember Ryan.
President Stonecifer?
Councilmember Stonecifer. Thank you for that, and I look forward to serving all of you and helping usher through this 2023 year. I'll now open nominations for council vice president.
Will you nominate for vice president? Sorry, question? Okay, I nominate myself.
Do I hear a second?
Do we need a second? Oh, my God. Just get it over with.
I take it back.
Nominations?
I'll nominate councilperson Judy Tuie.
Seconded.
I'll nominate Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you.
Second.
We have any other nominations? Okay, we will follow the same procedure. Whoever made the nomination may speak.
Yes, I think at this time, we have so many important issues coming up this coming year. I really think experience is really going to be needed to lead us to the many issues that we come forward with. I think Councilwoman or councilperson Judy Tuie has shown that over the years, and I really respect, and hearing, she acts very presidential and has a lot of wisdom and knowledge and really appreciate her insight, and she has a long history in the city. I love Councilmember Ryan, and I look forward to working with you in the future on many, many issues, and I know you're a great resource, and you have a great future here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse?
Again, I have appreciated Councilmember Tuie's leadership, and that has been beyond just her leadership at the council. And I think my concern is that we're missing an opportunity here, as we did this last round, of having one of the new council members learn while we have a very experienced council member in a place of leadership, to not allow for that secondary leadership role to be somebody to learn from somebody with experience, to be in those rooms so that when we have a council that loses that longtime experience, we don't have somebody there watching that magic work. And I don't want to take away from the long resume of experience that Councilmember Ryan has in those statements, but I also don't want to miss out on that opportunity to actually have somebody there in that room seeing how things are being done. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Would the nominees like to speak on their behalf?
Well, I want to thank Councilmember Schwab for nominating me. I'm honored to be nominated again. I was honored to serve this last year. We had a lot of changes. I'm anxious and excited about our upcoming retreat because I think we can really finesse and fine-tune some of the things that we started a year ago, and I really feel that I want to continue in my leadership role to get a lot of those things done and work with all of you in various ways. So, I do look forward to that, and thank you for my nomination, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
I'd be happy to reread my statement. However, I do appreciate Councilmember Fosse's mention about just the losing an opportunity to learn from our most seasoned council member and to shadow that, to shadow the, to be a shadow in the work that you've done, so I would appreciate council support in this role. I think now is the time to move into these experience steps, not later, and I just would appreciate folks' consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Vogli?
I think I heard Council President Stonecifer, this would be your second year in a row, but it's your third as president, so...
Second.
In 2021 and 2022, Judy Tuie was 2020, Bader was 2019, Roberts was 2018, Tuie was 2017, Murphy was 2016, Bader was 2015, Moore was 2014, Morgan in 2013, Gibson in 2012, Ad Holter in 2011, Roberts in 2010, and Hatlow in 2009. So, 2023 would be the third year, so that would be pretty awesome. Congratulations.
I believe your record is incorrect. Judy Tuie served two years in a row.
Interesting. Well, then, I apologize. Isn't that interesting, having Tuie again? Well, we're going to get a lot of stuff done. Congratulations, everybody. I know we haven't voted yet.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Councilmember Tuie.
Councilmember Schwab?
Councilmember Tuie.
Councilmember Fosse?
Councilmember Ryan.
Councilmembers Erlingo?
Councilmember Tuie.
Councilmember Vogli?
Councilmember Ryan.
Councilmember Ryan?
Councilmember Ryan.
President Stonecifer?
Councilmember Tuie. Thank you. So, we will move now to our council briefing agenda. These items come before the city council, serving as a council committee of the whole, and are likely to be scheduled at a future meeting. Item 16 is the Everett Transit Service Change Proposal. I'll now open the public hearing. We have Tom Hinkson here, the Everett Transit Director, and I think I'll just hand it over to you, Tom, and your team.
Thank you. Good evening, council. President Stonecifer, and congratulations again. Mayor Franklin, last September, we introduced a service plan to you, and it seemed like such a long time ago, and yet it wasn't nearly enough time for the process. And with me tonight is Mike Schmider, our operations manager, who's also in charge of service planning, and Ryan Beeson, who is in charge of our public outreach. Mike will describe what the plan was. Ryan will let us know how the public process went, and then Mike will return to discuss how we intend to use what we learned. Then I'll come back with a few closing comments. So, Mike?
This evening, we are reviewing the outreach results and feedback received in response to Everett Transit's proposed service adjustment for March of 2023. By way of review, the theme of this service... is the Move Ahead Washington legislation passed in Olympia this past spring. This legislation included historic investments in public transportation. Specifically funding that enabled transit agencies across our state to let each 18 and under ride for free. We believe the funding for this legislation needs to be in the system and even more effectively connects our community and our region. When we were with you on September 14th, we outlined the positive impacts of our post-pandemic service restoration on various routes across our system. We showed that from the month prior to that service adjustment in October of 2021 through June of 2022, that there was a total system ridership increase of 25%. Now, as we have just concluded 2022, we are now estimating that total system ridership increased this past year by over a quarter of a million riders. We are looking at a 34% increase in ridership over 2021. Everett Transit continues to rebound from the pandemic in a very positive way. By way of a quick review, the service proposal that we laid out for the public for March of 2023 included Route 18, as presented in September. This is a needed housekeeping fix with the Edgewater Bridge on Muckelteo Boulevard closing for replacement in the spring of 2023 for approximately one year. With no immediately viable paths around this bridge closure, our solution was to revive the Route 70 commuter service. Same time, the proposed routing provides another direct service option for getting to the newly opened Veterans Administration outpatient clinic at 220 Olympic Boulevard. And just as a reminder, that all the maps that we show here this evening are available on evertranzit.org. I started off at Everett Transit as a driver. When I went out for my check ride, I was on my third bus before I got out of the lot. So you do a pre-trip inspection. First bus didn't pass. Second bus didn't pass. I clearly didn't do my pre-microphone inspection this evening, so. But the maps, as well as the original proposal, are all available on evertranzit.org. Route 19. As presented in September, the proposed route connects Everett Station to Everett Community College and Washington State University via North Colby. This route restores direct service to Everett High School, as well as convenient, accessible service to Providence Medical Center, Seattle Children's Clinic North, and the Cancer Partnership. This is being proposed as a seven-day-a-week service. For the Route 3, Everett Station to Seaway Transit Center, the proposal realigned the Route 3 to better connect new housing and employment opportunities. The proposal included restoring direct service to Evergreen Middle School on Beverly Lane, while also providing another conveniently accessible and direct connection between Evergreen Way and specifically the new Four Corners apartment homes with job opportunities in the southwest industrial area, Boeing, and convenient connections to the Swift Green Line at Seaway Transit Center. The proposal to the public in September all included South Everett service improvements to Route 2, 8, and 12. The proposal included a modification to the end of the route where it terminates to address specific health and safety issues for employees, as well as the riding public, and also to decrease overall running time. For the Route 2, our proposal included extending the reach of this important connector route. It is rather short. It's only eight minutes in length, and there are not a lot of bus routes that are only eight minutes in length. We reasoned that by without excessively increasing its running time, we could effectively cast a wider net of service to connect more people directly to schools, shops, and regional transit options at Mariner Park and Ride. These changes, along with various earlier and recent times on routes across our system, were the substance of our proposal and our outreach efforts. I'm now going to hand the presentation over to Ryan Beeson, Everett Transit Outreach Coordinator, for a summary of that outreach.
Hello, I'm Ryan, and I'm excited to be here. It's my first time, so. Yeah, I'm excited to go over the outreach process and just share some numbers with you all. So, next slide. Thank you so much, Mike. Outreach goals. I'd like to start with by sharing with you our outreach process. It's pretty straightforward, but gives a nice foundation for the rest of the presentation. Our goal was to create and distribute approachable and easily digestible content that allows current, future, and potential ridership access to important transit-related information to receive feedback and better our understanding of the needs, concerns, and thoughts of the proposed transit service changes from residents of Everett and the greater Everett area. We collected surveys online and on buses in a multitude of ways, which we'll go over shortly. The survey data collected asked survey takers about their riding habits, including ridership frequency and individual route usage. It also gave each survey taker an opportunity to submit general comments on transit service or deliver more detailed individual route-based comments. Next slide, please. So how was this done? Online content and engagement were our main source of feedback. Our website and online survey gathered roughly 85% of the feedback received. Engagement was stirred using the following tools. Our website. A dedicated webpage was visited more than 2,500 times. Direct surveys. Our online survey collection tool is a quick and easy option and provided translation in any language through Google. And our first online community toolkit. Our online community toolkit was shared with stakeholders throughout Everett, supplying them with downloadable and immediately shareable content, including English and Spanish translated social media posts, service change maps, English and Spanish translated images for social media, emails, website distribution, and more. Social media posts helped us reach nearly 20,000 individuals, collecting 469 engagement or link clicks from 30 posts, and that's 14 stories and 16 standard posts. These social posts included both English and Spanish translated content. Targeted ads were a large part of this campaign and were used to target heavily affected areas, as well as historically underrepresented areas of Everett. With major changes affecting the 98203, 98204, and 98208 zip codes, we used English and Spanish targeted ads to help ensure our current, future, and potential ridership saw these proposed changes. The targeted ads to these zip codes accounted for nearly half of our social media reach. Next slide, please. Another tool used in the outreach process is a classic, face-to-face communication. A growing area of excitement for us is engaging with businesses in Everett, and our team worked directly with businesses throughout Everett to promote the proposed changes. These businesses included laundromats, shipping centers, libraries, and multifamily residential properties that allowed us to bring in flyers and brochures to their communities. So to any businesses who may be listening, thank you for your help. In-person, face-to-face communication is a valuable piece in the outreach process, and our team worked together to provide on-bus and in-person event outreach, sharing information with individuals who may not have access to online tools or engagement or do not have the ability to complete a survey on their own. While it doesn't bring in the most surveys, it is a direct communication or connection with our customers as we hand each individual an informative brochure. Everett Transit Outreach staff hosted and attended three separate outreach events, connecting with over 100 current, future, and potential riders. Everett Transit staff performed on-bus outreach for a total of 76 hours, connecting directly with more than 500 customers, and that comes down to just a little over six customers per hour. Everett Transit staff delivered more than 300 brochures to businesses in Everett, while on-bus surveys accounted for roughly 15% of the overall feedback received. I'm sure you'd really like to know about the survey responses, so we'll jump to that. Next slide, please. Some survey responses. As of December 27th, we have received 239 comments, 200 from our online survey, 39 from manually submitted forms. These comments included 88 general comments pertaining to transit service, as well as 151 route-specific comments. I'd like to add that, from the information provided, 99% of the comments we received were from current active riders, which is great. Next slide, please. Survey responses. From the comments received, the March 2023 proposed service change approval rate is 74%, so 26% not approving of the proposed changes. The positives and negatives, I base this on individual routes accumulating at least five comments or more. The route with the highest disapproval ratio is Route 12, due to no changes being made to this route. Comments surrounding this route asked for more frequency and later running buses. The route with the highest approval rating or ratio is Route 19. Comments surrounding this route praised the re-establishment of a Colby route and access to Everett High School. Next slide, please. Some comment examples. It's always exciting to see comments like these positive and to know that the work that goes into creating and maintaining a transit system is appreciated and used. Next slide, please. But it's a balancing act and one that we continually work on. So to all of you and everyone at home who took the time to share your thoughts, concerns, and ideas with us, we sincerely appreciate you. Your comments really do help us move public transit forward. Thank you. Mike's going to come up and chat some more with you.
I think this is the last option. I think this is where we're at. We're going to land here. Okay. Technical difficulties. All right. Thank you, Ryan. So with the feedback that has been presented, we have arrived at the following, and this is what we have heard from the public. Number one, move forward with Route 19. The elimination of the Route 17 in 2019 was felt acutely. Specifically, it was the service to Everett High School and Providence Medical Center. Route 19 restores that vital service at a meaningful level that is also sustainable. Secondly, increase service frequency on the Route 12. Pre-pandemic, we operated 65 trips a day along Casino Road. So the Route 12 serves between Seaway Transit Center and Everett Mall along Casino Road, as well as Seventh Avenue Southeast. Pre-pandemic, it was 65 trips a day. Today, that is 43 trips a day. So the revised service proposal restores that service completely, providing 30-minute frequency during almost the entire service day. And then what we heard was strengthen our existing service network. This was a comment that we heard in numerous conversations and throughout and through our survey. While there is strong support for modifying routes, there is also a need to strengthen current routes with increased frequency, as well as earlier and later service on both weekdays and weekends. And then finally, continue to dialogue with our community on exactly what the South End service details look like. Again, significant support for modifying the routes in the South End, but there was also enough uncertainty and lack of clarity over exactly what were the best changes to those routes. So those modifications are not off the table and will continue to be explored beyond the March service change. And that is us wanting to really apply all diligence to making sure that we dial in the routes that will long serve our community and without the need for continual adjustment. We want to build it right and establish that foundation that will long serve our community as it evolves further into an important regional transportation hub. So this revised service proposal results in a net addition of 513 additional trips per week, representing an 11.4% increase in service. That service is represented by the addition of the Route 19, the additional service on the Route 12, as well as 235 additional trips across Routes 2, 3, 4, 7, and 29. And a word on the Route 18, a note on the Route 18, as we heard in the comments. This was originally proposed as commute direction service on the Route 18, and the revised proposal has that as bidirectional service on the peak hours, so five trips each way in the morning, five trips each way in the afternoon. Additionally, it provides for earlier weekday trips, as well as later weekday and weekend trips, and revised route timings based on traffic trends. More and more, we hear individuals speaking about how congested things are getting as traffic returns to our streets. And that is something that is pushing us back in to make sure that our public-facing schedule is as accurate and reliable and dependable as possible. So we're going route by route, stop by stop, to re-gauge those timings and recalibrate them so that they are that reliable source of information and we can meet our commitments. So in summary, transit service is, with this revised proposal, fully restored to pre-pandemic levels. Service hours are more effectively distributed based on ridership analysis and customer input. We will continue to work on South End route changes. And finally, this is a measured, financially sustainable service increase. And I'm going to, at this time, invite Tom Hinkson up to share some final comments. So what will it take to implement these changes? Well, first, it obviously takes more drivers, and so we will need six additional drivers. And we need people to support those drivers, as well as the existing folks that we have. We need an additional operations supervisor, specifically working with safety, security, and training. This is a position that we had several years ago. We made it when we made a number of budget cuts, but we have suffered from not having it, and we need to restore it. There are new laws that require us to do more things, specifically with the safety issues. And so we want to be compliant. We want to be able to do that well. One transportation maintenance technician, that's a fancy job title for the person who will help maintain the bus stops, the shelters, all of the things, is a position that we used to have in 2014, and we lost it then, and we relied on another department to help us do that work. It was a noble experiment, but it has not been successful. We need to own that position and be able to do the work ourselves. Customer service technician is somebody who will work at the customer service office at Everett Station. We let one position go during the pandemic. We are down to less than eight hours of customer service at Everett Station. We would like to restore that to its original 11 hours and be open during lunchtime when people would like to come visit us. And finally, a fifth security officer at Everett Station, restoring to, again, our pre-pandemic service levels. So while there is no action required of you tonight, I would certainly like to get a feeling of your general support for our staffing plan, because in a couple of weeks, I'd like to come back to you with a budget amendment to fund that for 2023. So at this point, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Councilmembers Arlingo and then Councilmember Ryan.
Yeah, question or two. And I guess first one comment, if I understand it, we're actually proposing increases where I think I've heard that King County Metro and CT have actually been cutting back services. So if I perceive that correctly, congratulations to you and the team for making headway that way in a really important area, especially for our underserved communities. Plus, it's got a lot of environmental benefits. The Move Ahead Washington funding, if I remember right, that funding funds a variety of things, not just the free fares for the young. I think that was a qualifying condition to get the other, the funding for the broader increases.
That's correct. It primarily funded that, but I think that the spirit of that money is that we would start putting that money back into our community, giving us more service, a sustainable way to add more service and also address capital issues that may be pending. It's, there's not any specific string attached to that money, but I think the spirit of the money is to get it back into the community, and that's what this plan does.
and that's what this plan does.
The other question I had had to do with safety. I know there have been questions and concerns about drug use on buses and safety of the drivers and the passengers. Do you feel like you've got the support, the conditions we need, so that our riders will feel comfortable, and the drivers will feel appropriately supported and protected there?
Yes, I do. We monitor it very closely. We have gone through a recently adopted training program for all of our coach operators to know how to handle, let's say, a fentanyl incident on the bus. We've worked with the police department to work out our response. And I think that we've done all we can reasonably do at this point to equip ourselves to respond in a timely manner. I think the most important thing is that we feel the support of our whole community in dealing with this.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ryan.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation today. I'm always a fan of hearing about expanding bus routes. With regards to Route 18, thank you for responding to the public commenter's question. To clarify, are the routes are just going in the morning commute times and afternoon commute times? Is that correct?
That's correct, but they'll be bidirectional at that time.
Would there, could there be a consideration for one or two daytime? Since that route services the Veterans Hospital there, and veterans have appointments during the middle of the day outside of general coming and going of work hours, would there be a consideration to add a stop or two during the day for veterans?
Some midday service to link that. I won't say it's off the table. It's a matter of how much we can do with six drivers. So that's where we're at at this point.
Great. And thank you. I'm thrilled to hear about Route 19. One of the ways that we can support our Providence nurses is by restoring the route to Providence Hospital, so that they can make it to and from their shifts during the day, because the closest bus route's over on Broadway for them, so that heading up Colby will be a lot easier for them to be able to access the campus. And just a clarifying question. The route changes and the staffing service changes are all covered by Move Ahead Washington dollars.
That's correct.
Great. Happy to support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Tuie.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Really happy to see things are really getting back to pre-pandemic. And I have one question. Were there any routes that we cut for the...
Oh, whoops. Were there any routes that we cut from the pandemic that did not get restored?
No.
Okay, great. Super, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmembers Zerlingo.
One more maybe for Ryan. I know your response, I'm sorry. For Ryan, perhaps. I knew your responses were primarily from the riders. Are there, did you get any sense of what, for the non-riders, what was stopping them from riding? Are there any pointed things that we could do or encourage that would...
Yeah, I mean, as far as just feedback from non-riders, we only had one. So it was no. I guess a quick answer to that. No, just a lot of excitement around, yeah, increased service and reaching some new areas.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I was going to also ask about non-riders, because as we expand our service, it's what we really need is people, more people to get on the buses. So obviously, we've had a bunch of growth. Do we, is there any outreach that we do to non-riders to kind of figure out where we need to position ourselves to get them on the buses?
Well, Ryan and I participated in an open house that we had at the library a couple of weeks ago, along with other city departments. And we asked that question a lot. And there was one person who simply said, "Well, I would ride such-and-such a route if it operated more frequently." We get that. Generally, people will trust the system if it operates 30 minutes, every 30 minutes, or every 20 minutes, as opposed to every hour. We know that. And what we believe, as Mike has said, we're building a strong foundation of reliable service, and then our next step needs to be to add layers to that in frequency. But that takes buses, that takes drivers. That's a much bigger ask than we are able to do with our current funding.
Yep, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to council comments and liaison reports, starting with Council Vice President.
Council President, this was listed as a public hearing on the agenda, so I think we need to ask if there are any public comments, and then a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. I'm falling off my agenda here. Angie, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item at this time?
We do not.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I think I said we, we're here to the public hearing. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zerlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel? Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President, don't cipher.
Yes, and there's no further council action to follow on this item, as I understand it. Now we'll move to council comments and liaison reports. Council Vice President Tuie.
I don't have anything new to report. Just want to wish everybody a happy, safe 2023, and we'll move on.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, I'd like to just remind the council that our Governmental Relations Committee is going to meet next Wednesday. So if you have any feedback or input on the upcoming agenda for the city, thank you, Councilmember Ryan, for your input already. So anything else you guys have? Also, I look forward to the plan that we have to deal with, or we should be dealing with, our, dealing with our apprenticeship program for our city contracts, and also our PLA. So I just look forward to seeing where our leadership team is going to move forward with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse.
Happy New Year to everyone, and congratulations to our new leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Zerlingo.
Well, one comment about the, I guess it was yesterday's Sound Transit Elected Leadership Group meeting. I was there with Mayor Franklin. And one of the discussions there really relates to the potential stop and track alignment at Evergreen Way and 526, where there was a reference today to, I think it was called Four Corners, Four Points, development of large, I think, 420-unit apartment complex there. So the point I wanted to make is that I'm happy to see everybody involved in this, and looking carefully at decisions now, because it isn't just when the trains come here. All of these things happen years and years and years in advance, with bus, rapid transit, regular bus service, and connection to arterials there, and connection to employment. So that's stuff that we need to do now and right, and continuously from now until those trains arrive. So anybody who's got interest in that, questions, concerns, I'd certainly like to hear about any of that, because that is a future we're engineering now.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Did want to share an announcement that council will soon be welcoming a staff person, a Civic Spark fellow through AmeriCorps to help support council through research, gap assessments, and policy analysis. We're working with staff to outline the goals and expectations for this staff person, and more information on the work priorities will be determined after a fellow is placed with us, and we have a better sense of what their areas of expertise and their goals are. They will be supervised by council president or their council member designee, and will likely start in February for a seven-and-a-half-month assignment. So I know we've all been eager to have a staff person on board to help answer all the questions and do the research that we need to effectively do our job. So good news on that front. I did have a question for Attorney Hall. If, how would a resident file a complaint with the city to investigate a charter violation? I'm not aware of a person with a city that serves in an ombudsman-type of role. So if the city did violate our charter, what would be the proper course of action for that resident?
Typically, any citizen complaint of any sort starts with the mayor's office, and then is distributed to the right person. We do not have a formal process specifically for charter complaints.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just add, you know, residents can email the mayor's office, they can email the council, and we have multiple spots on our website where they can email any number of departments. But yeah, if any complaint gets routed to the mayor's office, depending on what it is, I direct it to the legal team, the HR team, or any other team that has expertise in that area.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Schwab, for bringing up the legislative meeting coming up. I put together a two-page white paper on some priorities that I'd love to see reflected and included in the city's priorities. And the intent and the spirit of it is in an intent of collaboration, and that I'd love to, you know, my finger on the pulse of a lot of things going on in the area. So I appreciate the hard work on that. I would like to make a motion that at least, that at least prior to our council retreat, administration provides council a complete list of outside boards and commissions, of which our city's mayor, their designee, or a city council member is a member. And I'm happy to speak to it if there's a second.
Second?
Great. Myself and possibly other councilmembers, as far as I know, we haven't been provided with a clear idea of all of the outside boards and commissions that require city membership or participation. I know there's, some councilmembers serve on PSRC, and I gathered all that from our appointment documents earlier this year, but there's other boards like Heart, Sound Transit's ELG, that aren't listed, and it's hard to get a good grasp of how far our city's reach is, or what the opportunities are to serve without this broader picture. So that information, I think, would be really helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ryan. We, every year, provide a list of all the council appointments, and I've actually never provided all the list of boards and commissions that I serve on, which is a much larger number, because I'm full-time. So I'm happy to provide that information to you as well.
Great, thank you. I did want to share, I went to the library board meeting a week or two ago, and I think most folks have seen in the paper that their hours are reduced in 2023 due to budgetary constraints, which are resulting in a shortage of staff members to cover shifts and whatnot. So the main library is now going to be closed on Sundays, and the Evergreen Library will be closed on Sunday and Monday. So I'm hopeful that, as we continue through the year, we'll be able to help with restoring staff members at the libraries so that they can go back to their full-time openings. I also wanted two more mentions. The point-in-time count is coming up in a couple of weeks, and it's the count that is all across in Homish County to help get a good grasp of how many of our neighbors are sleeping unsheltered. And so they need volunteers to go out and span all across the county to help with counting people, and seeing just how many people. And it helps the county and the city apply for grants when we can show the need and the increase in homelessness in the community. So feel free to reach out to me, and I can put you in touch with the folks that are putting the point-in-time count together, so that you can volunteer. And to the extended family and friends of Richard and Jean Minch, I wanted to express my gratitude to them for their generous donation to the Fund for the Animals. It's just really amazing support. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Councilmember Ryan for working on the Civic Spark application, and talking to them about what our needs are. And I appreciate your work on that. I have no further questions.
Point of order, do we have a motion in a second we need to deal with?
On that, no, we do not.
It was, all right. It was just a yes, we're doing it?
We're doing it. If we get approved, we will be doing it, and we'll bring forward a budget amendment for our portion of the fellow.
I'm sorry, I'm going to backtrack. I thought there was a motion made over, writing a list.
Councilwoman Fosse, second.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I don't think we need to vote on that.
I know, but we did one. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on.
Yeah, I believe if the mayor is saying she will do it, we do not need a vote on it.
That's something you can just ask for, and I'll happily deliver it to you. It doesn't require council action.
I just wanted to make sure that we follow the rules.
Thank you, thank you.
And Council President, on a different matter, a staff person has pointed out to Angie that they believe there may have been one person who raised their hand to speak during the comment period for the transit matter. If, I don't know if they're still here, but if they are, you do have the discretion to briefly reopen the hearing and allow that person to comment.
My apologies. Was there someone who would like to speak on the transit matter?
I was the one who rose my hand, but I'll defer.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for pointing that out. I didn't see that. We will now go into our executive session, which is expected to last 15 minutes, and we are not expected to have an announcement following that.